... to order, December 2nd, 2013. Welcome all. Those of you who are here, I will take attendance. Valerie Anderson is not going to be here. She's had a death in her family that she is attending to, I think her extended family, so she won't be here. Tony?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Michelle is not here. Emily is away. She will not be here. I'm here. Kelly is not here. Jennifer?
I'm here.
Michael?
Here.
Susan?
Here.
And Peter Tagley. So missing are Valerie, Michelle, Emily, Kelly, and Peter. We do have a quorum. Peter's here. Peter?
What was that about, sir?
We do have a quorum, so we can proceed. All right, first item on the agenda, item number two, it's the consent agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to remove anything from the consent agenda? Hearing nothing, then the items on the consent agenda are approved. Report of the chair. I have no report tonight. Superintendent's report, Dr. Hudson, do you?
Yes, I want to bring to your attention an issue that's come up at WPS. In the second grade, we have two new students, and we now have 24 students in that class. It is a complex class with many needs.
I'm sorry, what grade this is?
Grade two. As a wonderful teacher.
Wonderful.
Wonderful teacher has, and I know that some of the parents have been inquiring about breaking the class into two. I can tell you that we have many strategies in place, including a full-time educational assistant, who's also a certified teacher, who's wonderful, support for, by a special educator. And many times during the day, the class is broken up into different groups to address the needs. So, for example, in math, there would be three groups. One with the teacher, one with the special educator, and one with the educational assistant. The classroom is small, but they also have an adjoining room, so they have two spaces, so they use the spaces. I am not inclined, at this point, to break the class up, and I say that because people actually love this teacher. She's a wonderful, wonderful teacher, and I don't know who would want to leave that class with her. I think it might cause some problems. So, we are looking at it. We're diligently looking at it and doing whatever we can to address the size. We have asked the two new students if they would like to go to one of the other schools, and they have declined. There is already a student in the class who decided to go to Burnham at the beginning of the year, and, you know, it's just, I think people are unhappy, parents are unhappy, and it comes down to really that equity piece of, you know, we just have class sizes all over the place. The other schools, one has 14 class children, one has 14 students in the class, one has 20, and now WPS has 24. But I did want to bring to your attention, because I think it may come to you whether formally, at a meeting, or certainly, you know, in the neighborhood.
Yeah.
The only concern that I really see is that the second classroom that they use is actually a much smaller-sized room. It's not your traditional classroom, so, and I agree with you, because Erin's so fantastic that I think it would be a struggle to divide the class halfway through the year and then decide which teacher would go where. I think for, I think for a lot of parents, I think it's really more space than it is anything else, because I think if they were, had to choose between two classrooms and picking Erin, I think that would probably be picking Erin. And I know that size, in terms of classroom, because we have reach in the OT room and everything, but I think that if there was actually another room that was actually more spacious, that could be used, so that when they do divide and break out, it won't feel so tight, because there are extra carers in there. There, at times, there's five adults and then 24 students. So, it's a very cramped space, and so even though that second room helps, it's still not spacious and not for that, for that group.
I can speak to Mrs. Judd about that, see what we can do.
Right. Sorry, Alan.
I know, for some reason, this has never happened, but as opposed to being an option for a parent and a family, the region, I believe, has the right to send kids to the other schools, unilaterally.
I believe that's correct.
Really? What do you mean?
I'll have to look into that.
If you look in the, in the bylaws and in the plan, if you have too many kids in one school, you can send them to one of the other schools.
Through the bus?
Yeah.
On the bus?
So, we'd have to provide transportation?
Right.
Well, that would be something that we would have to, I mean, I know Emily asked, but...
Well, at this point, we don't provide transportation, because that's, we don't have buses that go from school to school. So, that's a whole nother layer to the problem.
Michael?
Just to follow up on Jennifer's point, I know at Burnham, when class sizes are significantly larger, they actually shift rooms. So, in other words, if the fifth grade is the largest class, it takes the largest room. I don't know if that happens at WPS.
They actually did take the largest.
So, they're in already the largest room.
Yep. Because they already have that in mind at the beginning of the school year, not anticipating, you know.
At this point, this is not something that requires board action.
No, I just wanted to make you aware. That's all at this point.
All right, well, please keep us advised as to how it's going.
I will. Number two, we have meetings tomorrow night at Burnham, 7:30, Wednesday night here, at 7:30, and the following Wednesday in Roxbury, at 7:30, with the architect and the project manager. It really, we, I know that the meetings are quick. You have the flyer, but we wanted to do it before the holiday, and we just felt sooner than later. And really, it's just a listening tour, to hear from people, what they're looking for. Project manager, architects want to hear the good, the bad, and the ugly. So, I encourage you to come to the meetings. I also encourage you to invite all community members. We will do one or two meetings in January, maybe on Saturday morning, so that this way, people maybe who can't come now are able to come. Also, you can encourage people, if they want to send me an email, or put something in a note, they certainly can do that, and we'll be happy to pass that along, so that their input is heard. So, that will be starting tomorrow night. And that's my report right now.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for this superintendent? My, thank you. Communications, committee reports. Communications, anything?
No.
Education committee, Michelle?
Um, no. Yeah, we are meeting.
There's no education committee report. Facilities, Greg?
No. I'd refer to the board.
Finance, Valerie is not here. Bob is not here.
I can report that we met Tuesday?
Monday?
Monday?
Monday.
Monday, at 4:00, and everything, next night.
Okay. Thank you. Anything on vision and mission statement for teaching plans?
Only that either the next meeting or our first meeting in January, we're going to just do a little vision and mission work with the board, just to get your input, because we have been meeting throughout the fall with teachers and parents and different people, and we just need your input before we finalize the work we've been doing.
Okay. We look forward to that. Negotiations, Greg, any?
As a matter of fact, I do want to update everyone on status, and I would suggest we do add an executive session at the end of the meeting.
Is there a motion to add an executive?
There is one. There is one in the meeting.
Okay. All right.
When we get there, we can add specifically the topics.
All right, thank you. Policy, Michelle?
Yeah, we met November 18th. We're continuing to work on, on our, the policies, the things that we needed to do from the audit. We have several policies on our agenda for tonight, and I just have sort of two questions that I wanted to put out to the board to think about, but we had a bunch of policies that needed minor revisions, and we're going to ask that CADE help us with that. And in our committee, we had talked about possibly putting policy reading on education committee nights, if the agenda allows. Obviously, we wouldn't want to do too many at one time, but by only having them on business meeting agendas, I mean, I don't know, I guess I could get a feel for what you all think. We could pile four or five policies on one night, or we could spread them out through the, out the agendas, two or three at a time, if everyone is all right with that.
Do you anticipate a great volume coming?
Yep.
Speaking for myself, I mean, I don't think I'd have a problem with seeing them on both agendas.
Okay.
Does anybody else agree with that?
All right, I mean, obviously, I'll check in with Pat and Teresa to make sure that we're not piling anything on an agenda, and there will be times when we have business meetings, probably where we can't put policies on. But I just wanted to see, that's been sort of an unspoken, I don't know if it's a rule, but we just always put them on business. So, that was one.
So, just before we go on, is anybody opposed to that, putting on hold, SDP? All right, thank you. Go ahead, Michelle.
The other thing that I just, I guess, wanted to ask either Pat and the board, I was noticing for tonight, we've got several second readings on the agenda, but they were not in our packet, the policies for first reading were. Now, they were handed out to us last time, and we did not make changes, but I'm kind of wondering if we can, if the things that are mailed to us could be put online where we have minutes and agendas, so that we can go back. I just, I don't want to continually copy all these policies, and we got the Chromebook, so I would love to be able to just go to the agenda.
That's the January meeting, trying to get everybody together to do that.
Okay.
So, after that.
Alan?
Yeah, I was going to say, after January meeting, we can talk about it during that meeting, because it would be good if in Google Drive, which is not necessarily associated with email, but usually notices go through the Google email, we should, I've already had, and I think we all have had, some documents shared with us in our shared Google Drive. That would be a good place to put a policy folder and have dated subfolders, and then the emails would just be referred to these policies for the night's meeting. And then they would be in the Google Drive, and the emails have links to the drive, stuff like that. We can talk about it.
We could talk about that. And I think another, another way, or in addition to, on the website, where, under the board, where our minutes and agendas are, if there was like an attachment section, so that, because I would love to also have all the other stuff there, not just policies, but whether it's population projection, you know, the things that are handed to us, I would love to be able to find them there.
Well, that's what I mean, do you want to find them in public website, or do you want to find them?
Well, if it's handed out, if it's handed out with us, that would just be one way to quickly look back, because it's already organized by date, and, and the, I think the major things that are covered on that agenda are there. So, that's one way. Or if it's emailed, either way, I just want to avoid handing out piles and piles of paper. And I don't know that if everyone brings back what they had from last time, so.
Greg, I was going to suggest that if, if we have had the policy presented at the meeting, there's really no reason it should not be on the website for the public to look at. And in fact, it would be good if we could make a reference, at the time of the meeting, to where it can be found, so we could all find it on the Chromebooks, and the public, who might be watching this on television, or might be attending the meeting, could also be able to have access to at the same time, so they could see what policy we're talking about. I think it would really help transparency that way.
I agree. All right.
Just with regard to, I know we're going to get to second readings of policies and old business. If anybody's uncomfortable about proceeding without, some of us may have brought copies from the last meeting, but if somebody's uncomfortable about proceeding on a second reading, can let that be known at that time, please. Anything else, Michelle?
Um, I don't think so.
Long range plan, both three?
No.
All right, moving right along. Item six, old business. Second reading, policy 5141.221, pediculosis.
Right, so, I know I have my copies with me, but I was going to shake you, so I'm going to put my hands on them.
While you're doing that, I'll move that we accept it for a second reading, the policy on 5141.221, pediculosis.
Second by Alan?
Yes.
Second by Alan.
Great. We did not make any changes to that policy when we had a first reading, and it was given to us by our school nurses. This is what the policy that they follow and recommend, so that's all I have to say about that.
Is there anyone else? All right, then, 5141.221 is moved for a second reading. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? All right, it's approved, thank you. Item 62, second reading, policy 6171.2, preschool, special education. Michelle?
We also did not make any changes to that policy. I'm still trying to figure it out.
Greg?
I will move that we accept policy, proposed policy 6171.2, preschool, special education for second reading.
Second by Alan. Is there any further discussion?
All right, sorry, I found it. This policy was talking about identifying students with special needs, a requirement to do so. That's, that's pretty much it.
Okay.
Any question?
I see no questions. All those in favor of 6171.2, preschool education for a second reading, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? All right, it's approved, thank you. And item 6.3, for a second reading, policy 6142.101, student nutrition and physical activity. Greg?
I will move we accept policy, proposed policy 6142.101, student nutrition and physical activity for a second reading.
Okay, do you have a second? Jennifer, second. Michelle, anything?
This is, this policy we had on the books before. It went to our wellness committee, which is now chaired by Jason Conway, and he recommended the changes and liked the policy. There was only one thing, major part, that we struck, which was the sale of foods. We want, we allow students to have fake sales and things, so we did not want to have a policy that said that they could not.
Evaluation came out, too, because that was more procedural, and is alluded to in the new version, but was detailed in the old version, and it, because it was procedural and not policy, we didn't feel it belonged in the policy.
All right. We don't put in a fake sales.
We don't put in a fake sales.
All right, is there anything else? Movement seconded, all those in favor of 6142.101, student nutrition and physical activity for a second reading, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? All right, it passes, thank you. Item seven, new business, first reading, policy 1331, smoke-free environment. That is in the packet. Michelle?
All right, before, before we get into the nitty-gritty of this, I just wanted to publicly thank Sue Haverly for all the work she has done helping Teresa with this. She's really taken on, trying to get this right, and figure out these numbers and things, and she's the one who made the additions red and did the strikeout, so it should be easy to follow the process of this, so I wanted to thank her for that. We looked at four policies that deal with smoking altogether. We have two tonight, the other two are being reviewed by Ken Gallow and Matt Karachi, and will be on a future agenda. But we were trying, we wanted to look at them all together, make sure that they were consistent. This policy has changed. You can see the strikeout. We no longer, it no longer ha, we no longer have a designated smoking area. That is the major change. And then you'll also see the addition of electronic cigarettes. It's been the recommendation of the administration and of CADE to treat electronic cigarettes as cigarettes for policy purposes. The government is, not much is known about them. They come in many different versions, and they all, it's sort of a discipline nightmare to not just treat them all as cigarettes for now. And, and the fact that the changing of a, smoking nowhere on campus is sort of the neck, the other piece of this that is a large, while some would consider a large change. I don't know that the smoking patio has been, up here, has been much in use. There's been no smoking on, in any of the buildings for, for a long time, and I think at all the elementary schools, there's no smoking in practice on, anywhere on the campus, and that is the change here for this policy as well.
If I may, I, in connection with the next policy, which is a suggestion, I guess, of the committee, 5131.65, the suggestion is to eliminate that policy, which had provided for, in the past, a smoking patio with permission of a parent, et cetera. Is it the, are you saying it's the suggestion or the request of the administration that that policy be eliminated?
Yes. Yes, that, that program is no longer in place. And actually, thank you, Alan. Alan just pointed out, on 1331, there's supposed to be a strike through the last sentence to achieve the goal of a smoke-free campus. The Board of Education will offer an ongoing program of support and counseling who are 18 years or older.
Who just missed it?
Yeah, I think in the multiple versions, that one.
I'll have to get some of that one.
That one got me.
All right, so in 1331, the last sentence should be stripped?
Yes.
Just a proposal, all right.
That was the proposal.
Greg?
I have a question. There's a little bit of a disconnect here on the issue of electronic cigarettes, for me, anyway, I think, primarily because they do seem to have been a perfection of that line from the movie about a person that blew the whistle on a, on the tobacco company, that cigarettes are a nicotine delivery device. Electronic cigarettes certainly are. That's all they deliver. They seem to deliver that in water vapor. And so, the question, I guess, is, is that if the purpose of the policy is to prevent, well, it notices in the last paragraph that smoking and tobacco products are absolutely linked to serious illness and fatal diseases. These ill effects strike smokers and also people who breathe ambient smoke. I'm wondering if there ought to be some distinguishing feature there, because it's not clear that electronic cigarettes fall into that category. They do deliver nicotine, they do not deliver ambient smoke, and they do not apparently cause any of the health effects. We don't know, because they haven't been studied.
Yeah, but I don't know.
But they don't, but, but based on the, what they appear to be, based on what people seem to know about them, they don't appear to have those harmful effects, unless you consider the ingestion of nicotine a potential harmful effect. I don't, I don't think it's appropriate for students to be using products that ingest drugs, like nicotine, on campus, and I think it's absolutely appropriate that those be included. I just think there's a disconnect between that and the, I, I think you need to, you need to deal with nicotine, and, because it's not a controlled substance, it's not a banned substance, adults are free to use it in virtually unlimited quantities, and therefore, I think, I just think this needs a little bit of tweaking to get it into, so that it's internally consistent. This is just a thought.
Susan?
I have two points, Greg. I agree with that. Perhaps the title should change, more like a nicotine and tobacco and smoking-free environment to be a little more encompassing. And I would also suggest that we struck the, you know, to achieve the goal of a smoke-free campus sentence, but the two sentences prior to that don't necessarily belong in a, in a policy. They don't, they're not necessary in a policy about the smoking and using tobacco. That's, that's sort of the reason why we have this policy, but doesn't really belong in the policy itself, I think. That's the rationale, right? Smoking and using tobacco.
I'm sorry, is it the sentence, if an employee breaks, takes a blow?
No, no, no. Smoking and using tobacco products are absolutely linked to serious illness and fatal diseases. These ill effects strike smokers and also people who breathe ambient smoke. I think, I think those are not necessary in a policy.
All right.
Just a suggestion.
Alan?
Well, yeah, those are kind of editorializing, but then, I think they're just justifying the policy. They're not essential, and I, in fact, I was going to speak to that sentence, because, excuse me, to Greg's point, you notice that there's no mention of electronic cigarettes in that particular sentence. I think there are other areas we can, we can talk about nicotine, nicotine ingestion doesn't have bearing on a smoke-free environment, we're just talking about a smoke-free environment. There are, if we need to, we can add that to our other alcohol and drug policies, use of drugs, if we're going to classify nicotine as a, as a drug for this campus. But, and if we want, we can talk about removing that, those last sentences, but I just think that we have to remember that, inasmuch as there's all kinds of different aspects to tobacco, this policy is really just talking about the smoke-free environment.
Yeah, I understand that, and that's why electronic cigarettes don't belong, because they're, they don't produce smoke, they produce water vapor. And, and the question about nicotine becomes blurry. Are we going to stop coffee? Because that's caffeine, and that's also a drug, a mild drug like nicotine, and the same category, basically. Are we going, no, we are crazy, because once you start down the road of deciding which drugs are appropriate, which are not, you run into some serious social repercussions, because I'm telling you, caffeine is a widely-used drug, and there are others. You're going to stop allowing people to take various types of cold medicine, if it's prescribed by a doctor. There's a whole raft of drugs that fall into those categories, and I'm just saying, when you approach these, I think you need to have a rational discussion and a way to distinguish between them as to why, because I'm telling you, it's a school. You've got to answer these questions to kids. When they ask, why do we permit caffeine, in fact, we encourage caffeine almost, and yet we do not encourage or permit nicotine? And the question is, why do you distinguish between them? I suppose both have taken significant quantities, significant enough quantities can kill you. You can be poisoned by nicotine and die from it, you can also be poisoned and die from too much caffeine, but the question really is, is why do we regulate one and not the other? And I think if we can't give a rational answer, I don't know how that, what kind of school that makes us, that's all.
Michelle?
I think, I think the point of the administration, at the moment, or at least when I was talking to Matt, is, is an enforcement piece, and until the research comes out, and we can always revisit this, if we decide, and if society decides that they want to treat electronic cigarettes differently, but for now, treating them as a cigarette makes enforcement of a non-smoking policy easier. I think they all, there's so many different ones out there, they all look so different. It, you know, it's not saying that adults can't use them if they want to step off campus, but on our campus, we're just, we're just making everything clear and easier to enforce. And, and we can always revisit it, I think, if the government or whomever just wants to make some sort of declaration about electronic cigarettes, but I think that was their intent, was the policing component.
What about the suggestion, Michelle, of eliminating the last two sentences of the last?
Yeah, that, you know, we've got sentences like that sprinkled throughout our policies. They're not required. They give some sort of rationale as to why the policy is there. I mean, there are also legal references below, which give rationale for why we have these policies, so I think that's just personal preference. As a committee, we usually try to keep our policies short, not too wordy. CADE often has paragraphs of editorial comment, and we will often leave in a sentence or two, so I think that's just really the, the pleasure of the board. I don't have a strong recommendation.
Is there a motion? I'm sorry, Michael?
Just one more point of clarification, when we, when we discuss this at, at the committee level, we talked about the fact that, really, this is trying to, to close a potential loophole in the current policy. What we don't want is students coming into the high school, for example, and lighting up an e-cigarette and saying, there's nothing in the policy that says I can't do this. Right now, technically, they could. If we have this rewritten, then they couldn't. And if, I mean, the whole point of e-cigarettes-
And if, I mean, the whole point of e-cigarettes is to mimic cigarettes. And I think it's a very dangerous idea to get students used to the idea of smoking even mock cigarettes, because that opens up other types of drug delivery systems that we don't want them using, that are maybe even more dangerous.
Is there a motion?
I think it was.
Let's see it. Is there a motion?
I think it was. No, oh, no. We just started talking about it. Sorry.
Do I need to make a motion to remove those two sentences?
You could do that.
Make a motion to remove the two sentences, starting with smoking and using tobacco, and then that second one, these ill effects.
All right. So Susan, I'm sorry, are you, are you moving to approve thirteen thirty one amended to delete the entire last paragraph for a first reading?
Yes.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. We're moving second. To, the motion is to approve thirteen thirty one for third reading, a first reading, eliminating the entire last paragraph. Is there any other discussion?
I just would point out, I don't think those two sentences are necessary, because the very first sentence of the policy says, in accordance with law and promote health and safety. And I think when you, I think the last two sentences just confuse it because of the reference to e-cigarettes. It appears to me the prohibition against e-cigarettes is not aimed at nicotine. It's aimed at the possibility someone would be waving one of these things around. And so I think this makes it more consistent.
All right. Anything else? All right, then all those in favor of approving thirteen thirty one with the final paragraph deleted for a first reading, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm aye.
Any abstain? All right, it's approved for a first reading. It would be helpful when we anticipate, perhaps when this is taken up for a second reading, that maybe more present, who weren't present for this meeting, will members to either have it in our packets if it's not on, available on the Chromebook.
Okay. And I'll make sure that there's a line through that last paragraph, or I'll try really hard to make sure there's a line through that paragraph.
All right. Seven point two, delete policy five one three one point six five, smoking elimination. A copy of that policy is in your package.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, this policy, we have talked about many, many times over the years. You can see that it was, well, it was adopted long before 2004, and it's amended and revised several times, I think, after, for along with 2007. But when they changed the smoking age to eighteen, we had to do this phase-in language, as you'll see. And this, this program is no longer in existence. So it's the recommendation of the committee to remove it from the policy.
Greg.
I move we delete and remove policy five one three one point six five, smoking elimination, because it is no longer necessary. It's superfluous.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
Second by Jennifer. Any further discussion? I just want to say that over the years, I have been a supporter of this policy. It has been opposed by folks who are opposed to smoking. I'm not a smoker myself. But when I first started on the board in the late nineteen nineties, a problem with this school and with many other schools, if you traveled around to high schools, was that if you went into the bathroom, where schools were, there is no smoking, you went into the bathrooms, the bathrooms reeked of smoke, because the kids smoked in the bathrooms. So we had a policy that allowed a student to go out with his teacher, onto the smoking patio, with written permission from a parent, and smoke. And it was pushed by our principal at that time, because we had clean buildings. The kids were not smoking in the bathrooms. They were smoking under this policy. And I felt, I'd always felt that it was worth it if a parent gave their consent to the child. I'm hearing now that this is no longer needed, that apparently they don't feel that they have that problem anymore. And so with that said, I'm prepared to support the elimination of this policy. Is there anything else?
I just would point out for the record, that in the old days, the teachers' lounges were also extreme smoking environments.
All right, all those in favor of, is this going to require two readings, I guess, to eliminate a policy?
I don't know. You know, I couldn't find a policy on that. We've never done that before. So just to be safe, we put it on, and we can, we can do it again if we want to remove it a second time.
You'll get Val here. She will certainly support this motion.
I know. She's always hated it.
She's been against this for three years.
Next meeting, we can just simply move to declare victory and go home on this policy.
All right, all those in favor of eliminating five one three one point six five, smoking elimination policy, I'm going to say for a first reading. Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? All right. It's approved for a first, it's approved to be deleted for a first reading.
Thank you.
Seven three, to consider if appropriate, approve the scope of work to the middle high school as recommended by the facilities committee to be included in the referendum with the pre-K dash five school building on the Chapaud campus. Mr. Prado.
After the last meeting, the
After which, what's your?
The, the last, and Board of Education, we distributed this draft that you see in front of you tonight. I would be happy to answer any questions. And I have it actually on, I'll put it up here on the board.
Sorry.
You can hang a flag on that.
Yeah, sorry.
Although, please do just put it on there. I'm sorry, Greg, were you going to, did you intend to make a presentation, or did you want to just?
No, I just wanted to put it up here so we can ask, answer any questions that come
Maybe you could just take us through what you did here.
Yeah, excuse me, it's a second video. Let me get rid of this part over here. No, not worse.
Try clicking on the, the box next to the X in the top right-hand corner.
Top right-hand?
Top right-hand corner, yep.
Not here?
Not the closed X box, but the one to its left. Try that. A little bit higher. To the right, there you go, right there. Try that. No, that's not the one.
He needs to get rid of that.
Yeah, close the sidebar, too.
Sidebar has to be.
Oh, the little X underneath the big red X. Try that one. Just put it up there.
No, I wouldn't have done that one.
Over your receipt again. And you lost it.
See? A top right, which is view.
It's just so much easier to read if we don't have the whole screen.
Greg, see where it says view up on top, very top line?
Oh, that's right. I forgot.
And then you want to say hide your sidebar.
I know.
There you go.
Full screen mode, babe?
I was just saying, here, full screen.
Is full screen mode right there?
Oh, Ctrl-L, yeah.
Yeah, full screen mode. Try that.
There you go.
There we go.
Yeah.
Us Mac users don't have to contend with this wily menu of garbage. But in any event, the point of this chart, because this hadn't been seen before, the point of this chart is just, is just to show you that we have, this is where we are now. We have a Washington primary booth-free school, Burnham School, and the middle high school. All right? The referendum calls for creating a new pre-K five to replace the three elementary schools, to make a five-year investment horizon investment in the middle high school. And then that leaves us with two potential scenarios down the line after your five-year investment horizon in the middle high school. Your elementary school you're going to have, that's going to continue through. Then you have to make a decision on the middle high school. You're either going to keep it and continue to invest money in it, because it's going to need money. We do know that. We're going to keep this long-term. Or you do something different with it. Either you tuition out the high school students, turn the K, the pre-K five into a K pre-K eight, you tuition out the middle high students, too, or you re-regionalize, or you do something else, but you're doing something other than continuing to invest in this building. One option, of course, is you could build a new building. But the point of this chart is to show you that what this referendum is designed to do is to handle the next five years on the middle high school and not create a, recognizing that there are going to be continued investments down the lines, we're going to keep the building. And that, and that's what that chart's designed to show. It's designed to make sure everyone understands when approaching this, that this is only covering the middle high school for the next five years. And, and that's what we're attempting to, to deal with. And the reason for that is, is when the selectmen presented this to us, they said that in the next five years, we will have more demographic data, we'll be able to make a better decision about where we're headed. If the numbers continue down, we may have to make a hard decision on the middle high school. Because at some point, based on the demographic trends, when you have classes of thirty-three to thirty-four students, you're going to have a high school of a hundred and twenty students. The question is, is it viable? And, you know, a hundred, well, more than a hundred and twenty, but less than a hundred and thirty, somewhere in that range, a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty students, you know? So is it viable? You can make another decision. So that was the reason why we focused on that. And that's what got us into reviewing these expenditures in terms of what was bondable, what were we going to do short-term, next five years? Because you can't say, I'm going to do something fifteen or twenty years down the line and bond it now. It doesn't work. Our bond council said they couldn't approve that, and hence, we were in this direction of trying to figure this out, based on the guidance we felt we had from the selectmen when they were here. Greg, if, I'm sorry, if I may, just so we're clear, this assumes that there's a referendum passes that passes all three towns, that you can change the regionalization plan and to build a consolidated elementary school. That's the, an assumption in this.
Well, the assumption is, when you get to scenario A and X, the assumption is that you've approved the referendum. If you don't approve the referendum, you're back in the far-left-hand side of the chart.
Go ahead, thank you.
Three schools in the middle high school, three elementary schools in the middle high school.
Your explanation makes sense. This is not self-explanatory. Almost needs to be some, some title. The referendum carries out that five-year investment, but scenario A and X do fall into, in that six-to-ten-year range. And to that end, the continued investment required that you, that's mentioned under the middle school, high school, can be more specific to that ten million dollar amount, right? Because you're talking about in, in that six-to-ten-year horizon, scenario A can be the middle school, high school, and approving, right? Because that's, that's what you would be going for, that the approval of that, that ten-point-two-million bucket of money to
The six-to-ten.
To do the six-to-ten-year range renovations and improvements. So it's really scenario A and B, because with the X should be really, you know, it's the other scenario. You just, you, you know, whatever might need to be decided in that middle high school. But the title of, of both that scenario A and now as it is X should be under that six-to-ten-year range.
Well, actually
The referendum carries out that through five years, but the rest carries six to ten.
Not entirely. You're not entirely correct. Scenario A could be six to twenty-five, it could be six to a hundred.
Well, then put that label on it.
Well, all scenario A, that's why it says scenario A, because we don't know how many years it's going to go out. Scenario A is what you do if you approve the referendum, is you will reach year six at some point. And when you reach year six, you're going to have investments that are going to start again. If you're going to keep the middle high school for years six through ten, you're going to have some investment that has to be done. If you're going to keep it forever, you're going to have other investment. The, the point of this whole chart is, if we felt that today, the solution was, keep the middle high school forever, we're not just interested in the next five years, we are always going to have a middle high school, then don't do a five-year investment, build a new high school. Because it would be cheaper in the long run and better for the district and more cost-effective to build a new middle high school than to continue to limp this one along in five-year intervals on and for night. Because what that, what that Castle Boo study showed us is that if we keep this school for about twenty-five years, we're going to spend twenty-five million dollars. And at the end of twenty-five years, we're going to have a sixty-five-year-old building that's going to require even further investment. So it makes no sense, because for thirty million dollars, you could build a new middle high school. So it makes no sense to, to, to continue to spend. What the selectmen came in here and said was, is what made more sense, was to hedge our bets and go out five years, put into this building what we need to put into this building, and go out five years and make our decision again. Look at it again, decide if we want to stay or go. But the problem is, the more you keep investing in this building over time, and the longer you keep that train up, the more likely you would have been better off building a new middle high school. But building a new middle high school is not what the board decided to do, and it's not what the selectmen wanted us to do. So that's what scenario A is. Scenario A is that, that number. You can't put a number on scenario A, because scenario A might be, go out another five years, go out another three years, go out another fifteen years. We don't know what scenario A is going to be. Scenario X is doing something different. That's why it's called X. It's the X factor. It's the, what are we going to do different if we, you know, different than having a middle high school? We may have a middle school and not a high school. We may not have a middle high school, middle high school or a high school. But X is something different than running a pre-K to twelve program. That's why it's X. So they're not really badly labeled. They're labeled the only way we can label them, which is that something will happen after this five-year point. And that's what we want people to understand. We want them to understand that this plan that's being put up is to get us through the, is to get us into the future on the, on the pre-K to five, and to get us five years to reconsider our decision. And that's why the numbers that follow this, it makes sense to, if you're going to take five years and make a decision in five years, you don't want to cram a lot of spending into that five years. You don't want to go out much more than you have to. Otherwise, if you're going to spend the whole twenty-five-million-dollar tranche and just advance it all whether the building needs the repairs or not, you might as well build a new high school. Because if you're going to spend twenty-five, you might as well spend thirty and get a new building. It would be far more cost-effective, it would use a lot less energy, and over time, it would actually, it would save money. So there's just no point in sticking twenty-five million dollars worth of expenditures, whether we need it or not, into the next five years, and then say, we did something. All we did was waste taxpayers' money. So that was the point of trying to, this, this document here, this page is only trying to call to mind the fact that if we approve this referendum with a five-year investment horizon, there's going to be a future investment or a different thing. We either have to do something different, or we got to invest more money. It's a decision tree issue. It's just to show you what we're doing. So no, so no one later says, I didn't know we were going to have to come back and invest more money in the school system. If, if we approved this referendum, I thought that was going to take us out forever, you know, into the twenty-two hundreds, you know? No, wrong. It's going to go out five years. And that's how far this plan will take us. It'll take us into the future, pre-K to five, but for the middle high school, five years. And that's what, that's what this is designed to show. There was some question of whether we were letting people know there was going to be a door number two if we chose this. And yes, and scenario A is door number two. Scenario X is door number three. Door number X, prefer. Okay? I just, I don't want to spend more time on that than it's worth, but that's what this The next, the next chart you saw was simply a chart that tracked two things. All of the numbers that you've seen before. Every number you see on this chart, every number you see on the two charts that follow are the same numbers we've looked at. This tells you where it came from. And if you look up here, you're going to see that the middle high school repairs came from the Castle Boo study. The additional capital repairs for the middle high school came from the older crack study, which we had done in the past. The middle high school septic actually came from the Howland Engineering Firm, where they did an estimate of how much it would cost to replace that system. There were some site improvements that came from CHK, which is an architectural firm. And then there's the swimming pool, which we got from Connecticut Aquatics, got those numbers from there. But those were swimming pool improvements we thought about. And then during the process, the facilities committee came up with some middle high school quality of life improvements of about three hundred thirty-five thousand dollars, which we're going to discuss later. But that's what these numbers total up to be. They're the same numbers you've seen before, there's no difference. And what the proposed referendum for middle high school improvements is, is eight million two eighty-one. These charts at the bottom, the total capex option, all one school, this is what it costs to main, this is, this is the status quo, basically, option one. That's to maintain the schools. The, the big bluish, purplish, whatever this is, blob, I have no idea, is the middle[1782.01] is the middle high school, and the orange part at the top is the elementary schools. This is option two B. This shows you, basically, middle high school additional repairs, and then the septic, I think, is thrown in there as well. And this is, this involves building a new pre-K to five, so that piece is no longer there. This is not there, but we tossed some extra items on. This had an inflation factor into it, it tracked into the numbers with the inflation factor, which is this number here, the twenty-three-eight number. This is without the inflation, this is twenty-two-three. And it's the same numbers without the inflation factor filled in. And then this is, this was the originally identified as one to five-year expenses, but after further analysis, this is what we really need to do, one to five. This was the six to ten piece on further analysis, more is going into the six to ten era, because we don't need to do that work, or there's work in there that we're just not going to do. And that is what this chart shows you. It shows you the size of that scenario A. This is what you're, we're being asked to approve. This is, this is door number two, scenario A, if you're gonna go out six to twenty-five years. Six to ten plus, everything sort of got into the six to ten, it wasn't in the one to five. So that last chart shows you the size, relatively speaking, of what's behind door number two, as we say, which is the scenario A. Scenario X isn't depicted, because who knows what it is? I mean, if it involves re-regionalizing, the expense calculation will be entirely different. But that's what that chart shows. Again, it tracks all the numbers from the long-range planning process. Finally, now we have to rotate the view.
Let's go down, full screen mode, down.
No, I don't, I don't know if that'll give it, because, no, that won't give, that's not what I want. What I wanna do is, I wanna actually zoom on this.
Zoom.
I mean, would it fit, no? Fit with? See, there's down there, there's fit with? Yeah, that's what I was, that's what I was headed for, there we go, much better. This is simply a listing of all of the items that have been looked at in the study. Every item is in there, from the Castle Boos, and then there's another section on crack and everything else. The ones we pulled out and did not do are the ones that are highlighted in yellow. Therefore, that's probably what we wanna focus on. Otherwise, we're doing everything that was on the list, except the ones that were pulled out. And I think you've had a chance to look through those, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, or Don would be happy to answer them if they're technical.
What's the second page?
On what was, on what was pulled out.
As I was looking, I went, oh, no, no, no. It's the second page.
Greg, I think that's page two.
That's page two of the chart. That starts like this. Here, look at mine, right?
Hi.
Do my guess, this is page one, this is page two, that's what's up there.
Oh, there we go. Okay, there's page one.
Just a question, I think it's the first page. Two of the items that are now in the six to ten-year column.
Yeah.
One is, replace one stall in each locker room to be handicapped accessible, and the one right underneath it, renovate shower to handicapped accessible student locker room. Just a question as to why that's not in the one to five, and why it was pushed off to six to ten.
I'm sorry, you can be, what I really need is, that is what I'm, I'm, I'm-
I can give you the total cost if that's-
No, actually, there's another-
Line item.
Line item number, hold on.
The line item number, and that's what I'm looking for on the left.
Seventy-six and seventy-seven.
Seventy-six and seventy, that's actually on the next page, I think.
No, it's on the first.
Oh, no, it's on the bottom. Seventy-six and seventy-seven were always in the six to ten. They came out of the Castle Boo study as being in the six to ten.
Yeah, I'm just curious as to why, because that would seem like in, since so much of, so many of the other changes are to be, to meet with the ADA, why that wouldn't be more urgent?
Don is here also. Greg.
I'm sorry?
Don is here also.
No, I recognize Don's here, but I don't know if Don has an answer different from mine, which is that Castle Boo's identified that as being an item of not high priority. It wasn't necessary to do immediately. It was something you might do if you were going to keep the building for a long time. And I don't know why they identified that as not immediate. Not every ADA upgrade is considered something you immediately need to do. Either we, either they've made that decision because there's sufficient degree of access there now, or it's, or we could make it sufficiently accessible, as need be, on a shorter-term basis. But they just did not identify that as an important, needs-to-be-done-immediately item. Wasn't the life safety, most of the items they have in their one to five category were life safety issues. Some of them were ADA, but most of them were life safety. And those are all, and those life safety issues largely remain in here as one to five items that were proposed. But this, this was always in that, and I don't know why, we'd have to ask Castle Boo's. Are there other questions on this? And if you could give me, if you do have a question, if you give me an item, a line item, item number, whatever that column is. Line item number.
Alan?
So I'm, I'm still confused about the logic of, I know that we had a meeting and the selectmen stood up there, and they said they wanted this to happen fast. It was that same meeting. And I remember, I think they all agreed that, and I remember, for some reason, everybody asked Mark, and he said, "Yeah, five years, that would be a good horizon to be dealing with." Which is why we're talking about the five-year investment horizon now. But it still says LRP up here. And as much as you're kind of covering A and X, five years isn't a long-range plan. And in the same referendum, where we're talking about a five-year investment, given the uncertainty of a middle school, high school, we're also talking about building a brand-new pre-K five school, which won't be paid for for twenty years. So we have this concept of short-term on this building, but long-term on another brand-new building. Short-term on a building that has, as I've said before, understandably deferred maintenance. It happens a lot, as I said, Gary Burchett talks about it happening in Berlin. You know, catches up, eventually he has gotta do it. So I'm not quite sure, when we had our option two B, which at that point was talking about building a pre-K five school, and figuring how much it would cost to bring this building up to speed, so that it would survive for twenty years. How we've dialed that back for five years, because of uncertainties. Yet we have enough certainty to build a pre-K five school, which is, as I said, gonna be bonded out twenty, twenty-five years.
Yeah, I can answer that question.
But, I know, but what I'm saying is, you could probably answer it to us here. But how are you, how, and I've said this before, how are we gonna explain this to the voter at the polls to understand that some of it's long-term, some of it's short-term, some of the expense is right where you're about to color in the oval, and some of the expense will let you know in year six? That's the problem I've always had with this scenario, of breaking things into these tranches you've talked about.
Well, I, I think there's, there are three things, I think, you know, we have to understand. First, I think that's critical, is that there's a difference between building an elementary, a new, a new elementary school, and doing renovations to an older building. And here's the difference. When you go to build the new elementary school, it's a new school, you're building it, from the first digging the hole, to the last cap on the roof, or whatever, it's all being done over a period of time that's very short. We're probably talking an eighteen-month window while that building is being built. You're going out to bond all of those items, and you're gonna bond the total cost for that building. And then eventually, you're going to, you're gonna go out and get bonding capacity to take down the total cost of the building, and within a year, you're gonna get probably a reimbursement from the state, in which case, you're gonna be able to adjust it, and then figure out what your final bonds are. That's the way you build a new building. But with the, middle high school is different. The middle high school is not doing all of this work at once. For example, one of the items that's in there is the septic system. Our septic system works fine, we don't need to replace our septic system. Similarly, there are other items that are longer-term, they don't need to be done now. There are certain items on the roof that don't need to be done now. The roof itself doesn't need to be done in the next five years. And it's under warranty that goes for longer than that. So the difficulty is, is you cannot go out and bond work to be done on a school ten years from now. You can't go out and bond seven, eight, nine, ten-year-old work to say that, "Yeah, we want you to give us the capacity to take down these bonds, to do this work when it comes that we need to do it," which in the case of the roof, might be in seven years, it might be in ten years. We don't know, because we don't know when it's gonna fail. We don't know when it's gonna get to that point. So that's the difference. When you're doing a renovation of a building with various useful life on the different components of the building, you can't do it all at once. And hence, you can only take, you can only bite off so much of that bonding apple as the markets will permit you to bite off, and that's pretty much a one to five-year plan. If you're planning to do it in the next five years, you can probably bond it. But if you're starting to go out further than that, that's where bond council would not approve it. And that's where everybody got in goodsey about it, because you're talking about stuff that's so far in the future that it's just not realizable today. And that's the difference. The only way you could do the total picture work on the high school would be basically to do all that work now, which would mean, do work, put a new roof on the building, even though it doesn't need a new roof. And believe me, I think that would be a lot harder to explain to the voters and the taxpayers in Region Twelve. We're gonna do, we're gonna, we're gonna take off a perfectly good roof that's got seven years left on its warranty, and replace it with a new roof because we can. I don't think that would be the right answer. And so I think that's, that's ultimately the response to your question. You can't do a construction project with long-range implications. You can't finance it in one shot. You've gotta have multiple trips to the well as you reach critical mass of sections of it that have to be done. And that's just simply the nature of the beast, that's what we've got. I'm sorry, Mike, you were first to mention it.
Sure. Question, if the, if the referendum fails, and we're looking at moving forward with the middle school, high school repairs as a separate next-step issue, would we still be looking at an amount of eight point two, roughly? Or does that number, is that number contingent on this being packaged with the new elementary school?
Well, if you, if you decided that it's, if the referendum failed and you wanted to revisit the middle high school, it would depend on when you revisited it. If you revisited it immediately, it would probably be the same eight million and change.
Okay.
If you revisited it four years from now, it would probably be different.
Sure.
So it depends on when, and what hits, and what your needs are. Because you'd be, it would be silly to go out with a referendum that didn't do everything you needed at that point.
So a related question to that would be, for eight point two million dollars, is that something that we would still need to bond? Or is that something that we could cover internally?
Well, actually, the project does anticipate covering some portions of it internally. Some parts of the total cost of what we're doing are gonna be covered internally, and some parts of it are going to be put out in bonding. I believe the bond number is the eight million, Don, am I correct?
Pretty sure.
But we, I, but some, some small portion of it, it's not a large amount, but some small portion of it falls into routine maintenance, or the amount of money we take down every year to put into building improvements, and what's part of our regular budgeting process. I think when we first looked at this, we had allocated a larger share to it. We cut back on that to bring it within line of what we actually are doing in terms of our budget. So some small portion of, a few hundred thousand of it is going to be covered within the years. The rest of it, we go out and bond.
We would need to move to another referendum then to approve that bond, correct?
Just the, yeah, just the eight, the eight million dollar bond, yes. You need a referendum to approve that, because you need to take that down at once.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, unless everybody's in for a substantial increase in their taxes, you can't do that in one year, you've gotta take that down over time.
Sure.
That's why we've got that one.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, it's great, okay. I am back to this front page. I think we need to have a very honest and targeted conversation with the public who wants to know more about what this long-range plan is. To Alan's point, five years is not long-range enough. We went through great pains to break out the cost as specifically as possible. And I think there is some benefit to say, you know, that six to ten-year horizon will look like this. I think, I think this is its laid out, is going to muddy the waters when we talk to the voters about this upcoming referendum. What you were just talking about made Chapag Middle School, High School sound very uncertain indeed. And we need to, we need to stand up and say, "We took a very close look. We know repairs and renovations need to be done. They need to be done, because they have not been done in the past." There's no, there's no hiding that fact. We are overdue with an awful lot of this. Can't make it sound like in five years, it might go away. The honest conversation would be, one to five years, this is the plan. Six to ten years, this is the plan, with the footnote and the understanding that if there needs to be changes, we'll need to address those at the time. But we, as a board, are looking out at least ten years, and we have a ten-year plan for Chapag. And if that plan needs to change in year six, then if that plan needs to change at any time, we can address those changes. But we need more specificity. This, and, and, and how, and your explanation of it led to what I would see as a, as a very confusing path in terms of explaining the repairs and renovations that are on the table and so very necessary for Chapag right now. We need to have some comprehensive and cohesive agreement as a board that these repairs and renovations are necessary.
But see, I don't think so, and I'll tell you why. Because we don't have a plan for ten years for Chapag.
We have a plan for six to ten years.
No, we have a, we have a collection of expenses, but I don't think that we have consensus on a plan. Because frankly, if you told me, "Do you wanna spend twenty-five million dollars renovating this building over the next ten years, or fifteen years, or whatever it ends up being?" My answer would be no. I do not wanna spend twenty-five million dollars renovating this building over the next ten years, fifteen years, twenty years. If you wanna spend twenty-five million dollars renovating this building, I'd rather we spend thirty million dollars to tear it down and build another one. Because to end up-
That is not a conversation that we will be having today, from now for the next five years.
No, but to be, we don't, no, we don't want a ten-year plan, and we don't have a ten-year plan.
We need to say, we've looked at what those repairs and renovations, what the bare-bones necessities would be. We could address whether or not we wanna go there, we can address that. But we've already, we've already put on the table, boy, based on all of these recommendations that we've spent a lot of money on in the past, that we've taken a lot of time and effort to pick through and separate out and analyze, this is what it may very well look like. We may not need to be there, we may not, we may not decide to be there, but in one to five years, this is absolutely how it's gonna look, because these are, that's what's needed. In six to ten years, this is the plan, but the plan may be addressed in a different way.
You're asking for something that doesn't exist. At one to five years, at the end of five years, this is where we're gonna be. We're gonna be facing either this or this, okay? We don't necessarily go here. We don't necessarily go to add another ten million dollars. We may not spend ten cents. We may decide to tuition out the kids and put an end to that. Now, we're gonna spend money on that, it's not gonna be free. But the point is, we may decide we do not wanna invest in this building. And that's the point of this referendum, is to say, this is what we will do for the next five years. We will fix the science labs, we'll do a lot of improvements in the school, we're gonna make a number of life safety improvements, we're going to make a lot of aesthetic improvements, we're going to repurpose and redo the mall, we're gonna do improvements to the front of the building. This is what we're gonna do for the next five years. It's gonna make a more attractive school, and a school that's gonna meet our needs for the next five years. But we aren't going, we are not identifying a plan for year six to ten, because all that does is forces us to back into doing it the more expensive way. And I think that was what, that's why you can't say, "We're gonna do this in year ten." I, I'm sorry, I'm, people have thought, I'm, I'm not what I'm saying.
I agree with Susan, because I feel that it's important that regardless of what happens after five years, it's important that we make sure that- it's important that we make sure that whatever it may be, whatever vision you personally see or what the board sees, that there's a vision that includes Chapag Valley High School. So for us to say, "Well, then in five years, we'll revisit and we'll see if we can tuition out," makes it seem like we're not invested in keeping Chapag going. And so for me, I think it's really, we have to be very mindful and thoughtful about how we project that. So whether we build a brand new school or whether we decide in five years to invest again is not, it's not irrelevant. But what's important is that we talk about that after five years, we're gonna do something next. And we're gonna keep talking about, I understand what you're saying.
Jen, the ship sailed on that when the board voted to do a five year plan.
I understand what you're saying, but, but when you're, we, but we, by planting a seed, saying that, "Oh, in five years, we may be tuitioning out." For me, I think it's premature to even bring that up, even though the writing is on the wall. And we've got five years to pull our stuff together and hopefully fill the, the high school. But my point is, is that I think it's important to be able to show that we have a plan for six to 10 years so that we say we're invested in keeping the school viable, regardless of what that is. And quite frankly, we should be saying, "In five years, you want us to come back and ask for another referendum because it means the school's thriving? You want us to come back. That's a good sign."
Well, no, I, I think in five years, the whole point of this was to say, "In five years, we will look into the crystal ball again." And this year, we'll have five years more demographic data. We'll have five more years of live births. We're gonna be able to, when, when you're trying to figure out where the high school is going, you don't look at where the high school is. You look at the kids being born. You look at the kids who are making their way from birth to, to pre-kindergarten. That's where you figure out what's gonna happen when you get over here. If we look at those numbers and we end up with the kind of live birth numbers we've had, where there might be two in Roxbury and one in Bridgewater.
I understand that.
And five in Washington. I think when you start to see numbers like that, you're gonna start to say, gee, I think the demographics do look like we're gonna have a high school of 120. So we need to decide, do we wanna keep a high school of 120? Do we wanna make it a rich, great program that puts out the best high school students in the world?
But we also need to put up the scenario of.
Or do we wanna do something different?
Look, what happens if, wow, in five, six years, it's thriving? We need to be able to say that we have that plan too.
If this high school is thriving in five years, you aren't, it's not a foregone conclusion. You're gonna invest the next 10 million. You might decide to tear it down and build a new one.
I understand. Still think it needs to be, the six to 10 needs to be in there.
Well, but you can't put that in there because it's there. It's in the numbers.
No.
It's in the charts.
Right.
You can't put it in this chart because this chart isn't trying to show that. You're asking this chart to show something it wasn't designed to show. This is not showing, all this chart is showing you is that after the, look, all this chart is showing you is that after the referendum and the five years goes by, it's a decision point. You have a decision to make. I know you don't wanna hear it.
No, no, no. I'm not saying that it can't be part of the decision.
Do I, do I put another 10 million into this aging building? Do I build a new one or do I do something different? That's the decision point.
I agree.
And that's what the board voted to do. It didn't vote to say, "We're gonna go out 10 years and we're gonna go out 15" because we can't. Our bond council nixed it. We can't do it.
We did.
Michelle?
Um, a couple of things. I think, um, because I, I agree in, in some ways. I think what we did do with the big list of repairs is identify, uh, some costs for six to 10. And I think mentioning them as, I, I think we need to be careful in saying, "Well, that's the number." Because as we know, when we were working on the elementary renovations with old buildings, that list is always changing. And you never know, year six, the roof might be holding, but the boilers might be blowing. So, I, so, but we have, we had it evaluated and we have a good estimate of what we think this building might need. But of course, it would need to be reevaluated as would enrollment and how the region is feeling at, at that point in time of investing the money, which, some of which we know is possible because we did the research. I think it's important to communicate that. I, I guess, I, what I'm hearing, what I feel is I don't really like some of the language on this little chart. I get the philosophy. I get the, the point. We're trying right now to, to determine the number for the referendum so we can move forward with that. And then it's semantics on, on describing the moving forward. I personally don't like seeing uncertainty of middle school, high school on a publication. I'm hoping we wouldn't go out to the public.
This is not, this is not a referendum public document.
Okay.
This is a document to guide your decision. This is for you. This is so you understand that going forward after the referendum, you have a decision to be made.
Right. And we're gonna talk about that as a board. And I think everybody's pretty, pretty clear that, that we're gonna be continually evaluating the health and direction of the region and looking at the enrollment projections and looking at our buildings. That's our job. We do it continuously, continuously. I think what we need to figure out right now is, one, do we like the number for the referendum? And two, to Alan's point, there is that, that component. We need to make clear to the voters that this number that we're talking about takes us out five years, but that we have, we know there will be additional costs six to 10. And whether we say that might be in the range of this, given that some things are going to age quicker than that and others might not. I mean, I don't know exactly how we describe that. I don't think we have to decide that tonight. We just have to agree that we're gonna make it clear to the voters that, that the money that is on the referendum question is not intended to make this building perfect for 10 years. You know, however we describe that, I doubt that could, that language can be on the referendum because they're very specific about that. It would just need to be in the educational literature explaining that there have been, we know that there will be additional money required in year six to 10. Here are some of the things that we are aware of. Be, know that there may be things that we're not aware of. I, I mean, I don't know. I'm sure we can find a way to communicate.
No, I, I think, I think you can. You see, and, and, and that, that scenario X situation is not as, the reason why it's got a question mark is when you reach year five, if you look at your enrollment projections, you may have to make a decision, "Do I sink 10 to 15 million dollars into this building over the next 10 years or six to 10 years? Do I knock this building down having invested 8 million? Do I knock it down and build a new one for 35 million?" Because that's what it would, would it cost when you get to that point? Or do I tuition out the, the, the high school students at a cost of three and a half million a year?
I, I understand. I understand.
Because that's 35 million dollars over 10 years. And you may decide that doesn't make any sense either. So it's, it's not clear to me. It, it's absolutely unclear to me that anyone is taking the position that there's no long-term future in Chapag. My guess is, if you had to put a guess to it, is we will still be here operating a pre-K to 12 system in 15 or 20 years. Or we will have a different set of regions. I don't think we're gonna tuition out kids because I think the cost is gonna be horrible. I think it's gonna be a lot higher than anyone thinks.
Well, but, but the thing is, I don't, we don't have to have that conversation.
No.
It's five years out.
Yeah, it's five years out. No, exactly. And that's the point. But all, all this, this was not designed as a communication device other than to you to show you what your decision tree was. That's what this is. It's to explain what comes after it in the charts, which is the financial piece, so you can see where the numbers line up for these pieces of it. And then at the end of it, it's the list of items that has to go into a referendum. So that, that's what all this, that's what all this is. We're not trying to do anything fancy. Alan?
Well, we're not trying to do anything fancy. It may be very fancy. And, and I think we have to remember, we keep talking about that we voted on five years. We actually didn't. We just kinda went, "Okay, nice." We talked about playing with these numbers for the last couple of months. But what we really did vote on was option 2B. And when option 2B was presented to us, we had a concept of option 2B being, this is a two-part question. Um, option 2B, building a pre-K5 school and renovating the middle school, high school for a combined total of some certain number. We had that number and we realized we needed to work on it a little bit. Now, at that point, when we were given six options to choose from, or seven, however it was, and the borders, boards of selectmen and boards of finance were given options to choose from. And they kind of advised us, we kind of made our choice to, on 2B because that was the one that they found most palatable for whatever reason. At that point, we had done years of work to come up with those options and then months of work to, to hone those options. And option 2B implied, it was a product of a work towards long-range planning and that the middle school, high school would cost so much to renovate so that it could sustain itself for 20 more years. And that the pre-K5 school would cost this much to build. And then we said, "We're gonna go into it and find out exactly how much." Now, you're saying it's the nature of the beast that we don't ever want to or even legally can bond for work that won't be done five or six or 10 years out. Did we not know this when we were working on all of these options? Because it seems as if, why would we even have presented option 2B to anybody with the idea of 49 million on it if we never planned to be legally able to pay for that as a referendum option?
I mean, option 2B is an odd duck option when it includes a list because the Castle Boo study list, which is what they seized upon along with several other additions to the Castle Boo study. Some were cracks, some were fool, some were the, the, the septic system. What I think people seized upon, or at least the selectmen did when they looked at that list, that list was prepared in order to get an idea of what the long-term costs for keeping Chapag were if we decided to select the status quo and keep the school. We needed to have figures on what the cost was. If we said, "Look, let's not make any changes. Let's just keep what we got and keep trudging forward." Well, you gotta know what the long-term cost is. The cost of renovating Chapag is not that list. That list is, yeah, the cost of renovating Chapag. If you're gonna stick with Chapag and keep Chapag and select the status quo and keep, or at least for as far as the middle high school is concerned, and keep it running, yeah, that's what you're gonna get to.
But that's the option we're supposed to present to public.
But you can't go to, you can't bond. Some work needs to be done right now. Some work needs to be done four or five years from now. Some work needs to be done six, eight, 10, 15 years from now. You can't go out to bond work that has to be done well in the future. You basically can't get much more than the next five years. The question of what we knew or didn't know, we were not suggesting that list for a bonding project. We were suggesting that that list was what the long-term cost of keeping this, this building was. And so when, what happened is, somebody chose one from column A, namely the K5 school, and one from column B, namely the, the long-term cost of maintaining Chapag. And there wasn't a connection which said, and we didn't have a lot of debate and we had that come up at a night. And it was decided that night. There wasn't a lot of trying to figure out what the, what the ramifications of choosing a list from a different column was to the 2B of building the school. The ramification was, we picked a list we couldn't bond. That's in essence what we did. It was not a, a bondable list because it included work that had to be done over a 20-odd year period of time. And it included work that didn't even have a known commencement date, like the septic system, the roof, and a variety.
Why would we do that? Why did we do that then? Why did we introduce garbage numbers into our calculation?
No, Alan, that's not fair. That's totally unfair. It was not a garbage number. It's that it was selected for a purpose. For, it, it literally would be like gasoline and milk are both useful, but they're not interchangeable. And when you come to the table of figuring out what's for dinner, if you happen to pick the gasoline container and sit it on the table, I would strongly advise you're not gonna drink it, okay? And that's what was done here. We reached into a set of numbers designed for a 25-year long-term horizon for a high school we selected to do nothing different and just kept going. And we then put it into a thing about building. And it didn't belong in a building. If we were gonna do a building project for the middle high school, we would do what we're proposing on this list, which are the 8 million dollars that you need in order to buy yourself five years' time. If you decide to stick around for longer than five years, you will either have to do something different or put in more money. And that's what this, that's what the list says. But you can't go out to bonding on long-term stuff. You just can't do it. So what we did was, we selected an option that was not feasible.
All right, but that's the problem.
And so it got fixed. And now you have an option, a proposal in front of you for a middle high school construction project that's feasible.
Okay.
That works, that our staff and in-house people believe works, and that our bonding council has reviewed and believed works, and our, our, and Bob has reviewed and believed works, and Don has reviewed and believed works. So now we've got something that you can actually use. And that's all there is to it. I mean, that was the whole point of the exercise.
Well, that, that's the second part of my question. If.
And then Michelle.
If we picked an option that's not feasible then, then why does the option need to have pre-K5 project and the middle school, high school renovation link as it was in that option? Because I think the thing is, the pre-K5 is a very definite project. And as you can tell, we don't seem to know, you know, five years out on the middle school, high school. You build a pre-K5 school, it's, it's around. Hopefully, as long as the state lets you bond it and build it for at least 20 years. Whereas this is like, I, I don't think it's quite as up in the air as you do. I think we have different opinions on that. But just the fact we have different opinions on that makes me think that, for whatever reason, we all used to think they had to be linked. Maybe that was in the same world of assessment that we had gasoline and milk in, but now we're in a different world. So maybe we can pull these apart and have two separate referendums. One could happen a lot sooner than the other one, obviously, because we know what we wanna do here.
No, a, a, actually, Alan, you answered that question and Kelly answered that question in a series of emails perfectly. Which is that if you were to approve, if you, there was some question raised about whether you could approve them other than separately. And the answer is, you've gotta put them both on the same ballot at the same time and the same question for this reason. If you were to approve the, what?
No, you're, you're, you're.
Hold on.
You're missing.
The only reason to link the K5 and the middle high school, I think, is because that's what we voted to do. We voted to do both of them, okay? That's the reason why they're linked, okay? I think the other thing actually had to do with paying for the number for the K5 versus the.
But you, but you see what I'm saying? We voted to do something which you've, you've, you have written off as the gasoline-milk conundrum. So clearly, if we voted on an unfeasible option, then we do have room, if we have room to change all the numbers, we do have room to separate them too.
Why would you separate them too?
Because they're two entirely different things. Even, even on here, you have them entirely separated. This exists in perpetuity, at least as far as this page goes, and it's.
Well, I mean, Alan, but if you, if you really wanna, if you really wanna stick the sword in the bed, the long-range plan, you will get rid of, you will start separating out the long-range needs of the district in terms of elementary versus middle high school. And in the long range, we need to do both. And I think the long-range planning process identified what we need to do. We need a new mill, we need a new consolidated K five, pre-K five elementary school, and we need repairs for the middle high school.
Which we're doing the first, but we're punting on the second. So that's why I'm saying we need to do...
We're not punting on the second. You're doing a plan where you are investing enough money to make, to buy you five years to decide whether that's what you really want to do.
That's the punting I'm talking about, the deciding...
Well, I personally, if it were up to me, I would have, I would have wanted to build a new pre-K to 12 building.
I know, we all know what it would want.
But we didn't vote that, we didn't vote on that. So what we're trying to do is, we're trying to present, the Facilities Committee is trying to present...
But you just said what we voted on wasn't feasible.
Because what, the specific thing that was voted on, namely grabbing the Castle Boo's ultra list and dragging it over and building it, you can't do it because of the time horizons on that list. But what you can do is, you can build a piece of it that you can bond, namely the next five years. At the end of five years, you may put the rest in, or you may do something different, but you have options at that point, which is actually a defensible thing. The other thing is, by not dragging anything more into the first five years than you have to, if you make a decision down the road to build a new school, you won't have invested 25 million and then have to build a $30 million school. You know, you will have spent less money, you will have, you will have covered yourself, and you will have bought time to figure the district out. We don't know what's going to come in five years, but the whole point of this exercise was to do both, to make, we need to make these improvements to the middle high school. There's no question in my mind, but we need new science labs, for example. We need to make a lot of improvements. And what this plan did is, in addition to the fixes that were in the Castle Boo study, it also added some enhancements to the building from a aesthetic standpoint, to improve the appearance, to make it the kind of school that you really want to send your kids to, that is going to make learning a very doable thing, it's going to be very good for the kids and for the people that are in the building. So it's actually a very good plan for moving forward on the middle high school. It's a very pro-middle high school plan, but it does what the Boards of Finance and Selectmen wanted us to do, which is it edges our bets for the future of this building. Not necessarily the future, we're going to always educate our kids, but the question is, are we going to do it in this building? And the only way to hedge your bets is to do a constructive plan that gets you what you need, that supports your educational mission for the next five years, and then you can make a new decision. You have another decision tree, it'll be a different board that will make perhaps a different decision, or maybe it'll just continue, who knows? Michelle, I'm sorry, you were next.
I have just a quick comment and then a question. The comment is, I think you've explained it well, although it took a lot of work, but it was a long-range plan, and that's what, what, that's why we looked at the elementary and the middle school, high school together, so we could see the impacts of the long-range plan, operation, building, et cetera. This referendum is just the first part of fulfilling that plan of 2B, which includes the building of the pre-K five and the first five years of the middle school, high school. It seems really straightforward to me, and it seems very easy to communicate to the public that the next part of that plan, 2B, would be to continue investing in this building, and we know what some of those costs are because we've done this study, and we can explain that. And then if the Board, the community, or whomever, at that point in time decides to get off the 2B track, that's their prerogative, but we put forward that plan, and this referendum is the first phase of it, and that's what we're working on. So that was just my comment. My question is, do we need a motion to approve the work that's here, or we're just sort of discussing it? And I also just wanted to thank the committee that worked on this, because I was not able to attend. I really appreciate the quality of life improvement part. Thank you.
The agenda item does say to consider, if appropriate, approve, but that would require a motion. Well, until you actually send it to a referendum, until you actually vote to send it to a referendum, I don't think you need a motion to send this to a referendum or do anything. You could accept the report to the Facilities Committee, you could do a variety of things. I don't have a strong position on what you want to do with it. I just wanted to get it out of the Facilities Committee to the Board, you'd have an opportunity to look at it and do whatever you want with it. I mean, I'm not asking for anything, I don't know what the superintendent wants, but all I want is to have you understand what's in here, what it says, and have a discussion on it, and that was the point of it. And the Facilities Committee paired it to what we believe is a bondable, approvable referendum, that will satisfy the needs of the facility and the needs of the district for the next five years. Kelly has an interesting thought.
Yeah, Mr. Cava, you mentioned an email that I sent. I have two points I'd like to make. First, that email was sent by me to the chairman of this board, asking specifically for several agenda items to be put on our formal agenda. Those items are things like the legality of spending monies on architectural plans and for projects which are disallowed by our current regional plan and which have been upheld as being not allowed by our regional plan by the Supreme Court of the State of Connecticut. I felt that was worthy of discussion at open forum in a board meeting. So I asked our chairman to please add those items to a upcoming agenda meeting. Unfortunately, the chairman circulated that email to all the members of this board in violation of FOI, because what that does is create a discussion, a discussion to which you jumped into, Mr. Cava. And I don't feel that we should be in violation of FOI laws. That's an appropriate discussion for open forum, open public forum, not for emails behind the scenes by the board. The second point is that if this project, if either of these products are approved, which it's not a sure thing that they will be, but if they are approved, the separate issue of the price, well, it's separate. The public may choose to renovate the middle high school, it may choose to build a new elementary consolidated school, but then the price tags are negotiable. And you may have to go back several times to referendum to get the correct price that the public is willing to pay bonded. So you can have a yes, a go-ahead vote, you don't have to revisit the pricing of it, just as we sometimes have to revisit the pricing of our annual budget, our operating budget.
Well, you might, except that that's why we had architects still obtain the numbers, that's why we had them cost these things out. These were not numbers that were pulled out of the sky. They were pretty thoroughly vetted by those people. Could they change? Yes. Can material supplies and costs change by the time you get the money? Sure, that's true. But as far as the FOI question goes, the only discussion, I think, of that email has been what's been had here tonight, and this is a public meeting, there are no FOI concerns.
That was not my, this is not the topic of my email to the chairman.
I don't know what the, that's not the point. The point is, there has been only discussion that's occurred right here, so I don't think there's any FOI issues on that. And if you want to have it, that's between you and the chairman. If the chairman wants to put it on the agenda, fine. If you want to vote it on to the agenda, fine. But I don't, I don't want to have any suggestion, it's just been some violation of FOI for discussions that all took place here tonight. Do you disagree that the discussion took place here tonight?
No, it is not on the subject that I asked for an agenda item on. No, it did not.
So no discussion took place on what you...
No, not tonight, but in the email discussion, you jumped in and opened the discussion, circulating an email by a board member to the entire board.
I didn't circulate the email.
No, but you jumped into discussion.
Kelly, if I, let me respond since you raised the issue. You sent me an email with a, a long email with a lot of detailed questioning, and I didn't think it was appropriate. And since then, you've sent me another one with more detailed questions about legalities and questions, and the only person you copied was me and Alan. And I don't think it's appropriate for us, the two of us, to have these discussions without involving the Board.
Jim, I didn't ask for a discussion, I asked for agenda items.
If I may finish.
To discuss it publicly.
I replied to you saying, to all the Board, I did not have a discussion with you. I replied saying, "I don't know the answers to your questions. I will refer this to the Board Attorney. When I get answers, we will put it on the agenda." That's all I said. I did not have a discussion with you. I thought it was fair that the Board knows what you're asking me to do. And I don't have an answer from our attorney yet. I have given him that email. When I get some answers, we'll put it on, because I think it's a waste of time to have it on an agenda item, to discuss it when we don't know what we're talking about on some of these things. I don't have the answers. So when I get the answers, we'll put it on. And that's the way I intend to proceed.
Is that going to be hard to bring it back up?
No, I don't think so.
On your, on the second page with the bar charts. All right, next page.
You have to use it with windows.
Can you, can you tell me what the process was, what the grounds were from going from column four or bar four to bar six, that arrow you have there?
Yeah. That was discussion that ensued in the Facilities Committee meetings. We had input from staff, we had input from the superintendent, from her building principals and whatnot, and we looked at items, we also looked at items that, you have to understand that that list, that large list, had items on it that were already worked, had already been done, since the list was prepared by Castle Boo's. They made a whole list of items, some of which had been done, some of which had been carried during regular maintenance items, some of which were being slated to be done from the existing 1% fund. So those items had to be pulled out. We also had items on there that the building principal, that the staff were simply not going to do. For example, there was a 900-some-odd-thousand-dollar item for building wheelchair-accessible ramps in the music rooms. And it wasn't a feasible project, because by the time they finished building the ramps, there wouldn't be much of a music room left. And so, that was decided, there was no point in doing that, it would be a nice thing to have, but you really need to rethink the whole process before you can do something like that. You need to come up with a better solution. That was not the right solution. And they said, and so it was decided, staff said that they would not, under any circumstances, make that improvement because it would decimate the rooms and make them unusable. So there were items like that, there were items in there that we were not pursuing because they weren't necessary.
No, but what I mean...
So that's what caused those reductions.
No, but it's not even so much...
Where the yellow items...
It's not even a reduction so much as it is a shifting from 1.5 to 6.1.
Right.
They still stack up to the same height.
The difference between this and this...
Is negligible.
The difference between 4.5 and 5.6...
Yeah.
Are removing the items that are already been done, et cetera, et cetera, and which actually, I think, reduced the total height of the column, but not tremendously. But the other, the other difference is, this was the reallocation based on the discussions that were had at Facilities over the period of several meetings, and the ascertaining of what the construction project involved and what we were actually going to do or not do, what made sense to do in the next five years and what didn't make sense to do. And those are all, the difference is, all of those items in yellow that are highlighted in the next couple of pages.
Right, but what I guess what I'm saying is that what you're showing us here is that if you take the height of column four and column five and put those together, and the column six and column seven and put those together, they're apparently equal.
Well, I don't know how close the scale is, but...
But, well, it should be because you have numbered axes. So what I'm saying is that it seems as if from column four to column six, you took things away from 1 to 5 and moved them to 6 to 10...
Yeah.
To make column seven.
That's correct.
So it's not things you didn't decide to do, you just decided to do things between 6 and 10 that were ordinarily in 1 to 5.
Well, no, if you, if you want, no, they were previously identified as 1 to 5, but if you want to go through the list, we can talk about each item and why they were moved and why they were reallocated. For example, the septic was...
Was that in 1 to 5 in the first place?
I'm not sure it was in 1 to 5 in the first place, Don. I think it was a totally separate item, but I think it ended up in the 6 to 10 pile, if I'm not mistaken. And I think the reason for that is, we don't have a shelf life on it. We don't know when it's going to, it could go tomorrow, it could go 20 years.
Right, right. But what I'm saying is, if you could have, if column four could have been bonded, then that is a better representation of what we're asking of our voters than...
Don't think so.
Peeling off as much as possible to bond it later and call it something we can't bond now.
No, that's not actually, that's not actually the thing. The difficulty is, is you've got to, you've got to wade into the details in order to understand what went on with that. Whoops, I'm sorry, wrong one.
I just don't understand how we had option 2B capital expenses for years 1 to 5, years 1 to 5, that we then revised.
The only way, Alan, is to go, you have to go through and look at every yellow line, and if you want to go through it, we'll take you through every yellow line and explain why they are what they are and why they were taken out. I mean, it's the only, the only way to do it, I mean...
Now, the yellow-lined ones are the ones that are moved to 6...
Yellow-lined ones are the ones that are moved.
Are moved.
Those are the ones that were reallocated.
All right, but, you know...
I mean, if you want to go through them, I'd be happy to take you through them, but it wasn't arbitrary.
I want you to go through them, but what I'm saying...
It wasn't an arbitrary allocation, it was done after an analysis of what items made sense to do and what items didn't make sense to put into the construction plan. Especially in view of what the purpose for this was.
You just want to know why they were moved at all? You just think they should be in 1 to 5?
No, I just feel that when we are presenting a total sum to the public, and if we're operating under the concept of, "We can't pay for anything until it's needed, so we don't do it until it's needed," I'm feeling that a lot of things were moved to that area to get them away from what we can't present to the public now as a clearer picture of that gasoline thing we were talking about. Because all I keep saying is that we are fully aware here, I think, of whether we commit to it or not, what the costs are for the next 20 years for this building. And I feel that the more we work to present the tiniest number possible in this referendum to the public, the more we either have to be very careful in our informational process or we have to build into the referendum, because we're making it seem as if what they are voting on is it until further notice. And unfortunately, we already know the further notice, and we're not working on getting that into the referendum. We're clearly, because of our inability to bond these things half a decade in advance, we clearly can't have them in the referendum as a bonding issue. But I feel that the whole nature of what we've done is to try to present a full option to the public, and that what we're doing here is trying to hide as much of that option as possible.
Alan, you're using pejorative terms that are not accurate. For example, if you look at item number 160, "Replace all skylights," the reason why that has come out is not because we want to hide it, it's because if you're not going to replace the roof until it needs to be replaced, you're not going to replace the skylights in the next five years, only to tear up the roof and then have to deal with the skylights again. So the idea was, this was analyzed, the only way, you can't stand up and make grandstanding statements, but what you can do is you can sweat the details, you can go through the details and you can see why certain items have been removed, and that's a, that's a prime example. Another item...
Replacing guardrails is not important, or...
No, it isn't. You're talking about a guardrail in a basement area that's accessible only by certain maintenance personnel, it was not deemed to be the kind of thing that needed to be done in the next five years. It's the kind of thing that in the long term, sure, you'd love to have it when you're doing 50 other things of a similar nature, but it wasn't deemed to be essential.
Greg, I just wanted to say too, when we went through the lines, Alan, you know, we didn't just throw them out. What we felt we needed, we put through the 6 through 10. They're not being hidden under the rug, they're there. But in all fairness, too, you have to be mindful about what you go to the taxpayers and ask for. If we want to make sure that this school is viable, we also have to make sure that there's going to be a student body to have. So is it responsible to go and ask for a much larger money when five years is when we do have to decide what we're going to do? It's not that we're not going to address it in 5 to 6 to 10, but we're hoping in the 6 to 10 that we have a much livelier school, that we can then happily invest and pay for the skylights and the new roof. You have to kind of be thoughtful about how, what number you bring, not to hide things, but to be responsible and ask the taxpayers so that we've done our job too. You don't want to ask too much money.
That makes sense, although why are we deferring the sprinkler system, sprinkler protection throughout the building?
That's a darn good reason. It looks silly, but there is a good reason, right, Don?
Yeah, I was going to ask about that one, because that's a big one.
It's almost a million dollars, we just...
We just, we have it.
It's a recommended item, not a requirement. There's not a requirement to sprinkle a school. Castle Boo's recommended it. Is there anything else?
That wasn't...
That's interesting. Okay?
All right, Greg, thank you. Michelle.
Do we need to recommend this list, or we've finished discussing? I mean, I, I thank you for the work that you all did on this.
Michelle, if you want to make a motion, make a motion.
Well, I didn't know if we need one, I knew we approved the list as presented by the committee.
Is there a second? All right, so what, my understanding what that means is, that as part of the referendum question, we put to the public expenditure of $8,281,989 for renovations in years 1 through 5 to the middle high school. Is that your understanding of a motion, Mr. Cava? Is that appropriate?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that again?
Can you say we're paying for standard renovations because it's a legal thing?
Michelle made the motion that we approve what's been presented, and I'm just trying to particularize it. Is it, is it fair to say that the motion is that the Board approve the, that whatever goes to a referendum question include $8,281,989 in expenditures for repairs to the middle high school for years 1 through 5? Is that...
Yeah, I think that's...
Is that your motion, Michelle?
Yes.
But you're not, you're not setting a date for a referendum, all you're doing is... I understand, I understand, I just want to be clear.
I'm just accepting, I'm just accepting the recommended list.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
I have a question.
Yes.
About the motion that I just made. Does that, I don't know if the committee, if that number needs to be hard and fast, the $8,281, you know, I recommend we take this list, I guess those are the estimates we're ready to go forward with? Is that...
Yeah, I mean, I think the best numbers we have right now.
Mm-hmm. Okay, that's fine. You read the number, Jim, and I didn't say that...
I read it off the list.
Yeah, I didn't read the number because I wasn't sure.
So that adds up to 18, which is... Whoa, whoa, whoa.
I mean, I agree with Alan, that if this, assuming this goes forward to a referendum I mean, I agree with Alan that if this, assuming this goes forward to a referendum question, it would have to be significant education to the public as to what the plans are or what the intentions are or what the questions will be for years six through ten and thereafter, and what the numbers are going to be. Susan.
Perhaps this should be more of a, like a reading of a first draft, for those not involved, and more time to chew it over and develop questions.
Unfortunately, that's not how it works. There's been a motion made, it's been seconded. If you want to move to table the motion, you can do that.
I'll make a motion to table, make a move to, make a motion to table the motion that's on the table.
All right, is there a second for the motion to table?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, there's no discussion. All those in favor of the motion to table, raise your hand. All those opposed for the motion to table, raise your hand.
Tony, your hand is up. Okay.
Any abstain?
No.
What's the result?
So three in favor. One, two, three, six.
The motion to table failed, so the motion made by Michelle and seconded by Jennifer is back on the table. Is there any further discussion?
Minus this page, correct?
The motion was made with regard to this number.
Okay, I didn't know if it was the whole handout, okay.
Now, Mr. Cava made it clear that this was just for the board use that cover sheet.
Yeah, I don't know what's going on.
It's not going to referendum, republic forums.
It could be something different, it could be a different exploitation of it.
That's fine.
You've obviously all got copies of it, it'll be distributed.
It'll make it public, I mean, there's no question about that.
Can I just say one thing?
Yes.
What, you're going to meet hopefully on December sixteenth with the project manager and the architect, and I think at that point you can express your concerns about moving forward with the referendum and the message you want out there, and how this is a one-to-five year plan, and that after that, decisions will have to be made, et cetera, et cetera. So whatever your message to the public will be, those people, including yourselves, will be the messengers. So you have time to massage that message.
Well, this board will be making the approval as to what information is formally.
Yes.
Because I wasn't clear based on what Greg just said about, he's not sure what would be packaged in with these numbers.
A motion's just been made to approve a number, that's what we're doing. Susan, you've got this, you want to distribute this, nothing, I can't stop, nobody can stop you, that's fine. But the question is, Alan has raised the point that there's got to be education of the public to, that they understand that this is not the end of the line, there'll be decisions that need to be made, these are numbers that we have for years six and beyond. I agree with all that.
No, 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 my point is, anything that formally goes out and gets presented should be uniformed and approved by the board.
Yes.
One member's, you know, one person's package should not look different than anyone else's package. We should all agree as to what the information is that goes out.
I would agree that any employee, like our, whatever the person is, the manager, the project manager, that any information that our project, board, project manager's putting out should be something approved by the board.
You're right, but once, Susan.
Yes, Alan.
Once again, that project manager or architect are hired for the project.
Not the architect.
Pre-K five.
Project manager for the whole project.
For the whole, pre-K five.
Whole project, yes.
The project manager.
Not the architect.
It's two different projects.
Is there anything further on the motion? All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand, please. Any abstain? What's the result?
Six in favor, three opposed.
All right, the motion passes. Thank you. I lost my job, it's on.
Okay, well. Seven point four is, for those of you who are not aware, we have a NEAS visit March twenty-second, twenty-third, twenty-fourth of two thousand and fifteen. NEAS is the New England Associations of Schools and Colleges. It's the accrediting organization for high schools in Connecticut, really in New England. And there's a lot of work that goes into preparing, doing a self-study, writing reports, and between everything else that's going on in education, the Common Core, the new technology, Power School, the new teacher eval, the high school staff is really behind the eight ball and has asked if we can provide them with two additional early dismissal days just for the middle high school. So that's what we're asking to do, March thirteenth and April third, they would be early dismissal days, and the elementary schools would have their regular days.
Greg.
Move that we schedule, amend the schedule, we add these two early dismissal days, March thirteen, twenty-fourteen, and April three, twenty-fourteen, for the middle high school scheduled for preparation work for NEAS.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, Alan?
Just want to ask quickly, remind me, I should know this, because it's all standard days now, what is early dismissal time?
Eleven forty-five.
So we're really only talking about a loss of two hundred hours.
So what happened? And the students don't have lunch that day, so it's really about, yeah, it's about two hours.
I'm just, if anybody can start you off, you know, vacation time for the students.
Will that affect the testing?
No.
Michelle.
I'm in favor, I just was wondering if we've ever in the past not done something uniformly across the district, K-12, with the teachers and the contract or whatever, having some doing professional, this is not really a professional development, it's work, but of another nature. I don't know.
I don't think it's a contractual issue, and I don't believe that, it's not a problem with the buses or anything.
Right.
So I don't think it will be an issue at all. And again, this is really, it's a lot of work. It's a lot of work to prepare. And, you know, they're going to have this Endocat survey, hopefully everyone is taking that, so that you can give feedback about the middle high school, and then they have to use that information to write their reports and prepare, collecting evidence, if the evidence boxes around. So I don't think it's an issue.
The teachers will be working.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, okay.
Is there anything else? All right, there's a motion to approve the change to the schedule requested by the superintendent. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Any abstain? All right, it passes. Kelly, I just want, before we move on to the next item, I just wanted to say, you have sent me these emails, I don't know the answers to your questions, I have put them to counsel, when I get an answer, I will put them on the.
I'm fine with that, I'm not one with starting a discussion by circulating the email to the entire board, and Mr. Cava jumped into a discussion, which is disallowed under FOI.
All right, item eight, opportunity for the public to comment on agenda items, anyone who want to address this? No. Item nine, Greg, would you want to make a?
Yes, I'd like to move, we go into executive session to give you an update on the teacher contract negotiation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Pat, did you have something else?
Yes, and I would also like to just talk about a personnel issue.
I'll accept that as a friendly amendment.
Second?
Yes.
All right, so there's a motion, go into executive session, discussion, teacher contract update and personnel issue. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Any abstain? All right, we're in executive session at nine o'clock.